All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on television on Comcast Channel 99 and rebroadcast on the radio. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Echols.
Here.
Councilman Billingsley is absent today. Councilman Cannon.
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we thank you for today. We thank you for the beautiful sunshine you've given us. God, we just thank you for your blessings on this great city. And God, we thank you for those who are in attendance today to be recognized for various reasons and all the help that they provide to this community. Thank you for this council, the sacrifice they make. Thank you for the mayor, for his administration. Pray that you'll continue to give him the wisdom he needs. God, I pray that you will give the council the wisdom they need in the important decisions that they'll make today that will affect everyone in this city. We love you and thank you for your blessings. Thank you for your son, Jesus. And we pray these things in his name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on October 23rd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of October 19th through 25th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor.
The first one, Sharon Yancy and Carol and John Lachas. Whereas music plays an increasingly important role in our world today and is one of the most sublime of human pursuits and is subscribed to by all races and creeds. Music is also the language of all people and one of the greatest forces in creating peace and harmony. The Alabama Federation of Music Clubs, the National Federation of Music Clubs and cooperating organizations dedicated to encouraging young musicians to increase their musical knowledge and advance American music join forces to direct attention to the dynamic influence of music in everyday living. Therefore, I, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, by virtue of authority vested in me, hereby proclaim the month of November 2018 as Parade of Music, Parade of American Music Month in the City of Gadsden and ask all citizens in this community to observe and take part in activities that recognize the importance of music, musicians, and musical organizations to the culture, life of our city, state, nation, and world.
I'm Carol Larkins. I'm the Alabama Federation of Music Clubs President. And I am so excited and thrilled every time we come here and the mayor is so gracious about giving us this proclamation to promote American music. That is why the National Federation of Music Clubs was formed in 1898, was because the Europeans thought that American music was blasé or not important enough. So since that time, we have been promoting, on November especially, and also throughout the year, American music. And anytime, day or night, just about, we can hear American music on our streets here in Gadsden and especially around Alabama and all across America. American music is a wonderful theme for us to have this month because not only we will have our youngsters coming up for the Etowah Youth Orchestra, we'll have their first concert, I think, on the 4th of November. And if you have not been to one of their concerts, you are really missing something else because they are fantastic. And we want to thank everyone, the mayor, as well as the council members, and Ms. Ivy, and also the mayor's secretary. She has always been very pleasant and helpful to us, and I do appreciate it and thank you very much.
Okay, she wants to take your picture.
Please, my voice. The next one is David Lester and Kathy Ischley.
Whereas hospice care plays an important role in American medicine by easing a patient's suffering while reaffirming an individual's dignity in a familiar, comfortable environment. Hospice care providers are assisting in hospitals, nursing homes, and private residences, offering physical, emotional, and spiritual support to patients who often have a short life expectancy. Hospice teams consist of physicians, nurses, social workers, counselors, and volunteers who are experts in the end-of-life issues. They offer pain management, therapy, nutrition, and other supportive care in the home or comfortable surroundings, making it easier for patients, family members, and friends to spend time together in their loved ones' final days. Hospice experts also offer grief counseling to friends and family members after their loss. Those dedicated hospice professionals and volunteers form a support network that continues to play a vital role in patients who are near the end of life since every stage of human life deserves to be treated with respect and care. Pro Health Hospice and National Hospice and Palliative Care Organizations and thousands of hospice agencies across the United States have declared the month of November 2018 is National Hospice Month. And we are calling on all Americans to observe these occasions with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Sherman Gotten, the mayor of the City of Gadsden, do hereby proclaim November 2018 is National Hospice Month in the City of Gadsden and encourage all citizens to increase their awareness of hospice service, to observe this month with appropriate activities and programs.
I'm Tina Ferris with Pro Health Hospice, and I just want to let you all know how honored we are to be here and thank the mayor, the city of Gadsden, and the city council for this proclamation. Hospice is so important to our community. I know that there are a lot of myths out there about hospice. People think that if you go on hospice, you're giving up hope, and that is far from the truth. Hospice is about hope preservation. Your sense of hope changes with hospice. It might be the hope to make it to that 50th wedding anniversary, the hope to make it to the birth of a grandchild. But hospice is far from giving up hope. In fact, a lot of times, people get better on hospice because we're able to provide such a higher level of care. With hospice, it's about quality versus quantity. You know, our hospice patients, they have health challenges. You know, there's criteria to be met to be on hospice, but it doesn't mean that you have to be on your deathbed. If you have a heart condition, you seek out a heart doctor. If you have problems with your lungs, you seek out a lung specialist. With end-of-life care, we are your specialists. You know, we can't fix that big problem. I wish we could, but what we can do is manage the problems that go along with it. And hospice is not just for the patient. Hospice is also for the families. We're there as a resource. You know, we're able to provide that bereavement care afterwards. And I know that I could just go on and on. Hospice is very, I'm very passionate about hospice. And our staff, they are also, hospice is a calling. But we are so glad to be in the community here, providing care to the community and people's loved ones. And if you need any more information on hospice, or I can be of any help, please call. Our number is 256-465-9500. And thank you again so much for this proclamation and for getting the word out about hospice care.
I'm about ready for you.
His daughter already says he talks too much.
And Caesar wanted to talk too much.
Y'all can see that the body may be failing, but the mind is still there.
I have another proclamation, and I'm going to ask the recipient to just stay in your chair, and I'll bring it up there to you in a minute. You, the dean of the Gadsden City Council for 30 years. Whereas Robert W. Bob Echols Jr. graduated from Gadsden High School in 1946 and attended Sneed State Junior College and the University of Alabama Gadsden Center. He was employed at Life Insurance Company of Alabama from 1958 until his retirement in 2000 as Executive Vice President and Secretary over the Home Office Administration and a member of the Board of Directors. Throughout his life, Bob has been a devoted husband to his wife, Betty, father of his daughters, Sherry Bridges, Nancy Johnson, and Ann Messner, and grandfather to his granddaughter, Ellen Bridges. Bob Echols began his service in local government in 1976, serving on the Water Works and Sewer Board as chairman for virtually all of that time. In 1986, he was elected to District 4 seat on the Gadsden City Council, the first administration of mayor council form of government after the change from the commission form. Councilman Echols has served for eight terms, and as president, four of those terms, 1990 through 1994, 1994 to 1998, 2002, 2006, 2010, and 2014. He received the Alabama League of Municipalities Designations of Certified and Advanced Certified Municipal Official. Whereas during his tenure, Councilman Echols has diligently represented the constituents and has worked tirelessly for all the citizens of Gadsden. His strong advocacy for the city included unity among elected officials, paving and drainage improvements, community development, and making cultural and recreational opportunities available to everyone. He led efforts to secure funding for needs of the local school system, including computer technology upgrades and training in the fine arts program, and was a tenant to schools in District 4, Ure Brown, and Donahue Elementary. Councilman Echols accepted leadership roles in his church and community, including Gadsden First United Methodist Church, Gadsden Rotary Club, Etowah County Democratic Executive Committee, Gadsden-Etowah Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Action Council, Couche Federal Savings and Loan, and Lemanco Corporation. Councilman Echols saw the need to improve access to services and assistance for those in need through collaboration and close proximity of agencies, and was instrumental in establishing a multi-agency center which was named the Robert W. Echols Jr. Family Success Center in his honor in East Gadsden. Therefore, I, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, Alabama, do hereby proclaim October 30th, 2018, is Robert W. Echols Jr. Day in the City of Gadsden, and express our deep gratitude to him and half of all those who he has served with him and those who have benefited from his 32 years of service to the Gadsden City Council.
That's nice. Sherry said I talked too much, but I'd like for my family to stand up and so everybody knows this is what's behind me for 32 years, except, well, Ellen wanted quite that. She was there, but she didn't realize it. There's the only one I'm missing, and that's my baby daughter, Ann, who lives in Madison, Mississippi, and so I guess she couldn't get here today. She would have tried. I want to thank, gosh, if I started trying to name names and think of the people I see in here today, like Tammy Jackson's taking Marie's place in the Family Success Center. I'm sure she's going, she has been, and she's going to continue to be great. Maybe I better shut up. I'll see you at the venue.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Echols. And again, I want you guys to bear with us because it's quiet in emotional. If you know a little bit about my history with Mr. Echols, it goes way back and extends over many, many family members. So do want to comment on how beautiful Betty looks. You look beautiful today, as always. You make him look good. You really do. All right. Unfinished business, item number 8A, is a resolution assessing grass-cutting lien on property at 1625 Cowell Avenue in District 3. Resolution number R-463-18, which was adopted on October 16th, was reconsidered on October 23rd and continued to today's meeting. What is the Pledge of the Council?
I would like to make a motion to not reconsider this resolution.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to not reconsider and allow R-463-18 to stand, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. Darius Winston, doing business at C&amp;J's Crab Shack and Bar located at 514 Broad Street in District 5, has applied for a restaurant-retail liquor license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license, Taiwan On LLC, located at 208 South 2nd Street in District 4, has applied for a restaurant-retail liquor license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Sir, if you would, just give us your name and address, please, for the record. My name is Sam Sutulio. I'm owner of Taiwan On Restaurant, and I live in 902 Pine Cliff in Oxford. And I'm excited to be here. I appreciate everything that you guys do and been very helpful getting the business started. And thank you to Kay Moore also, which she really pretty much got me here, and I'm excited so much to be part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 11 is a resolution approving issuance of a special event alcoholic beverage license to Brew's on Broad for an event to be held at 623 and 629 Broad Street on November 16th, 2018. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 12 is a resolution awarding bid number 3391 for old Alabama City Fire Station roof, re-roofing project. The city engineer has recommended awarding the bid to Construction Specialty Associates, Inc. in the amount of $39,879. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 13 is a resolution awarding bid number 3392 for tow and recovery services. The NEAPA coordinator has recommended awarding the bid to Hair Wrecker Service. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 14 consists of four resolutions. These are authorizing agreements for city sponsorship of fishing tournaments to be held at Gadsden Couche Landing as follows. Alabama Bass Federation, Inc., January 5th, 2019, sponsorship amount of $3,000. The next three are all events being put on by the American Bass Anglers. One event is April 13th of next year for a $1,000 sponsorship fee. The other is March 9th of next year, $1,000 as well there. And the final one is September 19th through 20th, 2019, and the sponsorship amount is $7,500. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt all four resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt all four resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all four.
Item number 15 is a resolution amending rental rates for a facility of the Parks and Recreation Department. This changes the Kiwanis Pavilion rental rates, including grill rental charges and a discount for nonprofit organizations. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 16 is a resolution authorizing agreement with EE Group, Inc. This is for plans and specifications required to improve the electrical system and lighting at the City of Champions Monument located north of Morana Park. The amount is $3,250. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 17 is a resolution authorizing agreements with Barnett Jones &amp; Wilson, LLC. This is for limited structural engineering services to be performed on various projects, and the amount totals $2,900. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 18 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Campbell Development, LLC. This is for redevelopment of seven loft apartments at 612 Broad Street in accordance with the Residential Development Assistance Policy. Upon completion, the developer is eligible to be reimbursed up to $35,000. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a request from the EMA. This is authorizing a service agreement with Motorola, and I ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is an agreement, and this is for the year 2019. It's a service agreement with Motorola, $29,340.
Okay, kudos to EMA. Somebody's got great negotiating skills because this is a $15,000 reduction from last year's agreement, so excellent job. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. Resolution 640, ask for unanimous consent to consider authorizing change order number one for bid 3371 to James E. Watson's son for the Noculilla Falls Kiwanis Pavilion parking addition.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I hesitate since we talked about some other stuff upstairs like dynamite and so on the board, but this is truly for rock removal. Extended rock removal on that.
The humor in that is we ask him not to say anything about dynamite, so.
Well, I was talking about that. You tell me not to.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards? Mayor Means, if you would.
Good morning.
I'm a lot rather big right here as up there, so. Thank you for having me today, and I've got several things I want to say. Some of them might be a little not real good, I guess, but first, I want to congratulate all y'all for getting elected, especially Mr. Bob there, who's been there a long time, always supported me. Now, you always gave me a contribution, or you're not going to quit doing that, are you, just because you're? But I appreciate him and all of your service, and I think I saw Kent back. I don't know Mr. Wilson, I don't know if he's there, and congratulations to them. I want to thank you for the funding. I'm the president of the IDA. I don't know how I let the mayor and Frankie talk me into this, but I'm a little nervous because Frankie's going to be critiquing everything. I know I'm not going to do it just right. I know y'all want to laugh, so you know you're serious about that.
That's a fact, lady.
But there's some things happened with IDA. Of course, Mike McCain passed away three years ago. We have not got an executive director. I'll tell a story. First, I want to say the, I don't know what his title is for the county, David Akins, I'll say that. I saw an email that he said that y'all weren't doing anything, they were going to have to take over. I don't know if that's the exact words here in Gadsden. Let me say upfront, as a mayor in another town, y'all have done more, and I watch, and it's not just because I'm in, I know Sherman a long time, I know a lot of y'all a long time, but y'all have done more and physically responsible. time, but y'all have done more and physically responsible. I keep up with that stuff and I admire y'all for what you've done, not just the venue, the park, Kiwanis, y'all are always doing something. And I saw where he said that they were going to have to take over or something that Gadsden was stagnant or something like that. That's totally ridiculous. Nobody asked me to say this, but I just don't like it. I just wish you'd get the cord to kind of dig a canal over downtown Attila, kind of run the river through the Attila. I can do some good now if I get a river, but I appreciate that. And let me tell you about what's happened with the county and I found out the hard way. I got a call one day. Oh, by the way, we had two two members of the county commissioner on the board, put them on the board last year. Those happened to be the two that lost election. I don't know if that's why this happened after they lost election or what. They had input, we they were, you know, we let them say anything they wanted to. They were a member of the committee, IDA committee. But all of a sudden, and this happened out of the blue, I didn't know anything about it, and this guy called me from about this company he wanted to locate around here, wasn't in Gadsden, wasn't in Attila. I won't tell you where it was. And he said, but what's happening? I don't know whether I call you and I just I didn't know him. He said, I see where the county is looking at hiring an executive director and I didn't know what he was talking about. Everybody knows I'm not very social skills on on social media and all that stuff and emails and everything else. And I had one of the members call me and send it to me where they were asking advertising for executive director. Well, I have to say that I've asked everyone on the IDA committee, that's their privilege. Now, let me say upfront, they can do what they want to. I've asked everyone on the committee, not one person was ever talked to about this, not one person, just went on their own. The problem it creates, yeah, they've got their own right now and I met with her new executive director, she's a nice lady last Thursday, but I told her some stuff, her eyes looked like what have I got myself into? The problem with that is, just like this company, this company backed off. He never called me back, I called him back, he could see a conflict look like going there that we didn't know existed and we do now. So I'm saying I'm going to list one project, the Cook project that you just got, I'm just going to list some numbers here and why the county would want to do what they're doing. Out of the Cooks project that y'all did, they get two hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-nine cents. On that same project on a ten-year abatement is the city Gadsden schools get a hundred, I mean a million dollars. Edgewall County schools get two point six million. The state of Alabama gets nearly half a million. So I don't know what the thinking was and I've got several friends on that county commission, but they were very secretive about it, so I don't know where we're going with that. We have and somewhere along the line, we're going to have to sit down and talk to them. I've talked to the mayor, he's willing to do that and I am too, but right now it's got us in we right now we can't hire executive director. We've been actually looking for one. You can't replace Mike McCain, of course, but we're actually looking for one, but when they see what's happening with this county thing, they don't know what to do. You know, I want to come to Edgewall County or Gadsden and let me say the executive director is at Gadsden-Edgewall IDA. Well, I appreciate the funding that y'all provide for the IDA, that's we couldn't do it without that. But we don't just help Gadsden, I've got a project right now that I can't name, it's over a fifty million dollar project and it's because of the Gadsden-Edgewall IDA. So we help all towns. But let me say upfront, I'm not don't have the resolution in front of me. I talked to the Gadsden, I mean, all the mayor's association unanimously passed a resolution supporting the Gadsden-Edgewall IDA. They took offense to what the county did too. I just want you to be aware of what's happening and after the elections next Tuesday and we're going to probably try to sit down with them, but we got three new ones coming in, so maybe things have changed. I don't know who was responsible behind it, but it it happened just like that. But it really creates a problem for us and I just wanted to let y'all know that. But again, I appreciate what all y'all have done and like I say, I watch, I know Sherman and I, we were going to run against each other one time and I knew so much on him, he knew so much on me, we was going to have to say, boy, he's a nice fellow, he's a nice fellow, so we couldn't use that. So we could never run against each other, but I consider all y'all friends, y'all have always supported me and that's not just the mayor and council, it's your administration, your employees. I mean, it takes it all the way down because I've been there, I've been on both sides. I've been in Montgomery and back in Attila again and we're just a small scale compared to what y'all do. But I wish you would get the microphones fixed, you know, everybody knows I can't hear good, but I have my TV run up on a hundred to hear y'all. Maybe y'all don't want to be heard, maybe that's what it is, but especially Derrick, you know, he talks kind of quiet, but I do, I watch it every, I think on Wednesday night or something like that, but I do appreciate what y'all do and that's not many mayors is going to do that to another town, but I mean, I watch, I watch all of them, but I really appreciate what y'all do. Y'all are really looking out for citizens and I don't know about your complaint thing, you know, all mayors get complaints and stuff, but I'd be glad to answer any questions, especially about the county thing. It just came on us, I mean, it's really created a problem. Think about that. You're coming in potentially coming into town, you don't know whether to talk to Gadsden-Edgewall ID or the county. Now, they did it for the mega site, but if you'll read what they said, they said something and they didn't call them municipality, the communities. They can't go into a community, a Attila or anything unless I pass a resolution or an ordinance allowing them to do it. So, I mean, I don't know what, like I said, the young lady looked like she had been hit by a ghost when I started telling her a bunch of stuff Thursday, I think she just thought, what have I got myself into? But anyway, we'll work it out hopefully together and I'm willing to meet with them and I know the mayor is too, but I'd be glad to answer any question and I appreciate you allowing me to be here today. Frankie, I do okay?
Oh, thank you.
I never do it.
I'm just glad you all are trying to work together because we got to work together in unity.
And we do. Well, the way I looked at it though, they didn't try to work together when they did this right here.
We still.
I know we still do. I know we still do and I mean, you got to go on, you got to go on further and we'll see how that goes. And I think with the new three new ones, I've talked to two of them and they're very responsive to trying to do something different. They recreated that alliance, you know, and whatever that means, so. Anyone else? Thank y'all very much for letting me be here.
All right, thank you, Mayor Means, thank you so much. Yeah, there's a there's a lot that can be said. That gentleman that we're honoring today has some pretty strong opinions about having dealt with county government over the years and I'm not going to put him on the spot and make him tell you about any of them, but he's been he's he's got some pretty strong opinions about having been burned over the years trying to extend himself for the betterment of the city. I can I can think of one project that stands out, the DHR project, the jail. There's an economic study that was done that the city footed the bill for and it was for the betterment of the mega site, for the benefit of the mega site. The city has done its part in terms of extending the olive branch and will continue to do so. So so any suggestion that we haven't, I take offense to because the city has, the city has done its part. So so I'm very proud of what we've done in terms of trying to reach out. Okay?
Give size, couple of things that mayor covered, but the door has always been open to work with the county, with IDA. And the door got closed, but hopefully it's opened again. He's willing, the mayors are willing to work with them. The county commission has every right in the world to develop their site, but they have no statutory authority in any municipality unless given to them by that. So it creates some confusion that we think is unnecessary. And I want to mention Bill Green, who currently is assistant director at the IDA and we're working with Bill at this time on several different projects. So the thought that the city's not doing anything is a little offensive and we'll continue to do and with the mayor and IDA members' help, we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor?
I'll continue that discussion just a little bit. It's just facts, not throwing rocks or anything, but we also did the DHR building and the health department, which are normally county projects. We did Black Creek Parkway, which is a county project, few hundred thousand dollars, but it's good for everybody, is why we did it. There's multiple things that we've done to work with them, but you know, sometimes you can't work with somebody who doesn't want to work with you. So there's an issue going on. I heard they just took a vote this morning about the jail situation, so we'll see where that goes, I don't know.
The whole jail thing is kind of like, kind of like, you know, the cell phone provider, cell phone provider tripling your your fee, your monthly fee and then getting mad at you because you don't like it. I mean, it's it's just a bad deal and, you know, it's very concerning that as a city we've tried over the years, long before any of us who are sitting here have tried, so. Councilwoman Toles?
Yes, I'd just like to announce along with Ms. Gaither of the MEA, I suggested to her and said to her, you know, we just got through doing the mud buckets and that was the mud buckets with supplies to go to the Carolinas. And so I suggested to her, then why didn't we as a city, as a community, do this on a regular basis and all the time to stock up so that when there is a disaster somewhere, then all we have to do is go to their storage and get these mud buckets and send them out. So I think this would be a good ongoing project for the city of Gadsden and this is where citizens, we've got Dollar Generals all over the city, so you can just go in there and buy some type of supply, you don't have to buy a whole mud bucket, but I just think this is something that we could do because I know we hear this all the time. If it ever comes to Gadsden, we're going to need some help too. So I'm just saying, let's let this be sort of like an ongoing project and we supply mud buckets and store them at the MEA. And the last thing, and I know everybody's going to say, but Councilman Echols and I go all the way back to when I was in elementary school, but I was a principal and he was always there to help me financially. I appreciate it. Two people that I will always thank and remember and that's, he didn't ask me to say this, but that's Craig Ford. He's been good for this community. He has helped me at Donahoo and so have Councilman Echols, so I appreciate him very much. We got some wisdom and we appreciate his wisdom.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to thank the mayor too for that proclamation. I understand I have a role in.
Don't tell everything.
I must have made a good impression on that one. No, if I started trying to thank everybody, we'd be here till Christmas. But I want everybody to know that most of the time, I was proud of everybody. I was proud of this council. We didn't let race get involved hardly at all. And I hope that that's going to continue to be the same way. You have to work together to do as many things as this council has done and is in the process of doing now. You can say all you want to about it hadn't done anything, but that's because you don't know. And I don't know how you can miss all the things that this council has done. And I'm proud of it. I'm proud of what we've been able to do. And this is my last meeting, I'll be lacking sitting out there sometime, but thank you again and good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Echols, thank you. We love you and we're going to miss you. Councilman Worthy?
I just want to say thank you to Councilman Echols for your service to the city over all these years and what you've done for the city. And God bless you, Godspeed. But I also want to say, now, I've been advocating for our own jail since I've been here and I'm going to continue to. We have our own jail, we ain't got to worry about them going up on the price. That's all I got to say.
Okay, Councilman Cannon?
I just I'm kind of sad that Councilman Echols is leaving us today. It's maybe his last time up here, I've learned a lot from him. He's been like a daddy to me. He's never, in all the years I've been here, he's always helped me out, anything I needed to do or wanted to do, he would talk to me. If it wasn't the right thing to do, he'd say, hey, that's not the right thing to do, let's go about it different. And I really appreciate you, Bob, for everything you've done for me and the city of Gadsden.
Thank you.
Councilman Reed?
I want to mention the Trump retreat at the FOP and I think EMA and the fire department put on this Halloween, they really did get, I've never seen so many kids and people lined up from the convention hall all the way down to the parking lot, down to the theater, four or five deep and just kept coming. And every one of them were happy, just having a blast. So my kudos out to those three agencies for doing that. I noticed that we have a new newly elected representative, Jenny Shaver is with us this morning. Jenny was with the city for a long time and we're really proud of her. And Bob, all I can say is it's been something else and my pleasure, twenty years, hard to believe, but it's been all my pleasure.
Thank you, Ben.
Do want to extend Councilman Reed's recognition of Jenny Shaver. Now that you're elected, you can move on back to Gadsden, how about that? Thank Larry, Mayor Means for the comments and just the enlightening presentation earlier. I see one of our former council members out there, William Cunningham, you remember that guy, don't you, Mr. Echols? So we appreciate him showing up. You bring out everybody. So we appreciate that. We appreciate those of you who came out to support our meeting and to support Mr. Echols. Just a quick moment before we move to adjournment, I, Mr. Echols, I've known Mr. Echols for some time, for years. He's been a part of my life for years. My grandfather was the custodian at First Methodist for a number of years and as a kid, I would go over with him because I liked to walk around with him as he was working. And he was deliberate in introducing me to certain people. And there were two people in that building that he would introduce me to on a regular basis. Dr. Stansberry was one and this gentleman sitting here was another, that he was very and I appreciate it because they were good about giving me candy money at the time. So if I don't owe you anything else, Mr. Echols, I owe you some candy money. So so I just appreciate you. I've had the privilege, he gave me my first job before I entered college, the summer before I entered college, I worked at Life of Alabama and it's because of him, because he just said, hey, that's Yvette's boy, bring him on up here and put him to work. He allowed me to sit at his feet for the last eight years. He just allowed me to sit at his feet and he slapped me on the head whenever I wasn't doing or saying what I needed to do and he hugged me when I was. You've heard me say this before, twice, not just once, but twice, on television at this meeting, that gentleman sitting to my right apologized for how minorities were treated during the civil rights movement. He didn't do half of it, he didn't do any of it, knowing the kind of man that he was, but he apologized for it. It takes a big person to do that. I love him forever for that, I will. And I just want him to know how much I appreciate him and how much he means to me, so. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So move.
Second.
They said. They said. [music]